Thank you, and we'll begin our meeting. So that brings us to Section Two. We do have a change to the agenda. We added Item 7.27, Vehicle Maintenance Inspection and Repair Agreement with Vehicle Lease Option Between the School Board of Okaloosa County and Destin High School, presented by Mr. Jay McGinnis, Program Director of Transportation and recommended by the Superintendent for Approval. And so at this time, I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll move it.
Moved by Dr. White.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carried unanimously. And for Section Three, we do have some important items here. 3.1 is our proclamation to recognize the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, presented by Superintendent Chambers.
Thank you, Madam Chair and School Board. Like you know, it was here recently, we have honored and recognized Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and I think all of us, I think, are aware and acknowledge that our students are our most precious resource. And I think if there's anything that we could do to eradicate this disease from everyone, but especially our kids, our children, that's something that we would do. So we do have a proclamation this month, and I would like to read it before our board and those who are here. "A proclamation to designate the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas children are Okaloosa County School District's most valuable resource, and their health and wellness is crucial to their success in the classroom; and whereas Northwest Florida reports an average of 50 local children are newly diagnosed with cancer each year; and whereas cancer is the number-one disease killer of children in the United States, yet childhood cancer research is severely underfunded, where the National Institute Institute of Health only allocates 4% of cancer research funding to children; and whereas research in the field of childhood cancer will allow for better treatment options, safe quality therapies, and ultimately, a cure for this deadly disease; and whereas Raleigh Foundation for Childhood Cancer Research has provided a valuable resource to children and families who are afflicted with this horrendous disease. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Okaloosa County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of September 2023 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and encourages others to participate in efforts throughout the year to raise awareness and funding for childhood cancer research with Raleigh Gulf Coast while supporting families who face devastating effects and costs."
Thank you.
And I do believe we have a couple folks who are here with us to help us honor and recognize this month. And if you don't mind coming forward for a moment? And you might have a few words.
I think David would like to say a few words. We thank you. I mean, we've been through it, and I think I'll talk to everybody who's been through it, and we know what it's like, so anything we can do to help families, and we are good supporters. We respond especially to him, so I'm very proud of what he's done, and he is 11 years on intermission, so we thank you for recognizing him and anything that you can do.
Thank you.
And is it David?
This is David.
And Mom?
And Mom.
And I'll just say, David, as you know, you know, going through something like you went through, you know, people can say they understand, but they really don't. But Mom understands. I just want to thank you because you went through something, and now you're making this a difference, and making a difference in the lives of other students. And a lot of folks don't necessarily do that, and everyone has their own path, but your path has led to really making a difference in the lives of other students and children. And that's something I know that this board, and myself, this school district, really appreciates, and others might also have some words for you and this cause.
Thank you. Anybody want to say anything?
Well, I'll just say, thank you for everything that you're doing, and I know that it was a tough, tough road to hope, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'll just say that there's rarely a family that you meet who hasn't been touched by cancer in some form or other, so I thank you for stepping up to the plate and helping continue bringing awareness to the situation. Thank you for being here tonight.
And don't go too far. And Dr. Kelly, if you'd join me?
And 3.2. We brag all the time about the wonderful people we have in our community who help support programs and schools here. And so 3.2 is another great example of that. I think we have Ms. Ann Johnston and Helen Harris, who are here on behalf of Okaloosa Public Arts Donation, and they are coming to give us some great news.
Helen has the big check.
She has the big check. You have the real one, okay?
We want to thank you tonight, as the School Board, for having us here as guests, because we know that you're very busy, you know, with your own work, and we're proud of you. We're proud of our School Board, and we're happy with our school system. I'm Ann Johnston, retired school administrator, and this is Helen Harris. She's in our art organization, Okaloosa Public Arts. And Helen is the owner and operator of HH Arts in Fort Walton Beach. It's at the lower end of Beale Parkway, is that right, Helen? Yeah. And she has art for sale, but she, but she, well, we need to say that, yeah. But she also works with several community groups, not just Okaloosa Public Arts, which we're a part of, but she works with ADSO, Arts and Design Society, on First Street. As a matter of fact, you are the incoming president of Arts and Design Society. So Helen is very active in the art community, and we depend on her a lot. We just got through putting up the art show at the Courthouse Annex in Shalimar, and we had three floors of art to take down from last year and put up for this year. And we just did that, what, about 10 days ago, something like that? So, you know, we get out there and do, you know, whatever we can, and thanks to Jean Hood over in Ocean City, she lets us hang the student banners, if you've noticed them, that are on the utility poles, along with the city, you know, banner, the student banners, that we're very proud of, because so often, students in a school, as you well know, from different groups, get a lot of recognition. And not always does that recognition come to art students. So we're very proud, and they're very proud when their banner gets put up there. You can see them out there once in a while, taking a picture with their parents in front of their banner. So we're very happy about all that in Okaloosa Public Arts, and the things we've done for the last few years, we've had great response. And I will turn it over to Helen now. As I told her, I said, "I'm not going to speak but a minute or two, they know me." I feel like it's old home week here. I love it. It's good to see all of you, you know? It's just feels like we were just yesterday back at Choctaw, and Lamar was in the History Department, and Linda was in the English Department, and, you know, so we just moved right along and had a good time, didn't we?
We did.
Yeah, and we really did. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Helen to tell us a little bit more about this donation that Okaloosa Public Arts is making to the high school students and teachers in Okaloosa County. Okay, Helen, it's all yours. You might want to step up here.
Oh.
Thank you for inviting us, and we're glad to be here, and we love, all of us, to help the arts in schools, and we're hoping to do so for middle schools eventually. But right now, it's the high schools. And what we have done is, in the past, we just gave the money and allocated it to whatever schools were there. But we decided to try and find out what is, what do they really need? So we asked the teachers to tell us, what are they doing? What are they teaching? How many students do they actually have? We found out a couple of high schools don't even do art, so. So what we did was, we decided that we would give the money to the teachers who have the art programs. And we've done it a little differently this year. We asked them how many art students they actually have in classes, and we're giving them $13 per student. And the amount that we are giving this year is $14,040. To be divided between. So it's going to Choctaw, Lisa Williams and Natalie Williams, Lisa Hall, rather, and Natalie Williams will be getting a share. At Cresview is Alex Pottinger and Laurie Phillips. At Fort Walton Beach is Kim Moran, and at Nice Hill it's Dollar Jones. And they will be, this will be divided up between them. The actual check is here, which I will present to you, Mrs. Chambers, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know you have the list from Terry as to how it's divided up, the amount of students they gave us. So I will also say that ADSO has a fair show, and the fair show, every fair show that participates or in the country is supposed to have a fine arts show within the fair. And ADSO has been doing this for a number of years. And what it is, is the adults, yes, but we have middle school, and we have high schools. And they all get awards. They get the top award for September third, also receive money. And so very nicely, like just yesterday, I saw Laurie and him, and they were there collecting the awards, because some of the students have already come. And they'll be pictures, and they'll be on the ADSO's Facebook, and you'll see all the students' pictures, or their pictures, and not all the students are there. But you'll see the pictures of the artwork. So I hope you all come down to the fair show this next week, and go inside, you can see the art degree, you know, have the paper prepared, and see, because there's some phenomenal work. The teachers have just done great work with these students, some of the work they've been turning in for years now. And what I get a kick out of watching these girls grow up, they're cool. Seeing them a few years later in high school, and now we have one gentleman who came back, and he's an adult, and working in the art field, and he's been entering as an adult now. So it's always nice to see them, and they move up, and they still keep on their arts. So it's our pleasure to give you this money, and that's it.
I'll hold it.
And we'll hold it.
I think we have some art teachers who are here.
Good, great.
Thank you.
I'll move in a little bit, you can crowd in behind me. Yep. Just come right over here. Yep. Absolutely. Can we get everybody in?
If you were on that side, so it's balanced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, you know that. Yeah.
Thank you, ladies, again so much for your support of the arts programs in our schools. That brings us to approximately 6:15, in which we have a public hearing, so I will ask my colleagues to scroll down to 15.1, Public Hearing for Adoption of Resolution 23-07, Approving a Proposed Purchase and Sale Agreement of Real Property between the Board of Okaloosa County, Florida, and the Okaloosa County Teachers Federal Credit Union. And I would ask my colleagues for a motion, and second, to consider continuance on this item, and with allowing me some gratuity here to reschedule at a date in the future, because we don't yet have a date that this might occur. So entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Moved by Dr. White.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Avancheck. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carried unanimously. Thank you very much. So that allows us to scroll back up to where we would be at Section Four, Administrative Personnel Appointments, and we have none tonight. So we are at Section Five, Public Comment, Agenda Items Only, Blue Cards, and I think I saw one come through. Thank you very much. So this is, I'll put my glasses on so I can, Delcina Beatty, and if that person would come forward, thank you so much, and if you would state your name and your address. Our attorney has some rules there.
Yes.
Good evening. And these procedures will apply tonight to any speakers either on agenda items or general public comment. If you're speaking on an agenda item tonight, you'll be allowed three minutes, and if it's on a non-agenda item, there'll be two minutes. We would ask the speakers to state their name and address for the record before they begin, and remarks should be addressed directly to the chairman. And the concerns discussed should relate to educational issues in our school district. Personal attacks against officers and personnel should be excluded from your presentations, and items pertaining to personnel matters are under the responsibility of the superintendent and are not routinely heard before the board. We would ask that all speakers and the persons attending our meeting tonight act in a respectful manner, and not make personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, and attacks on individuals are prohibited. Thank you very much.
I think we can do that. Delcina Beatty, Cresview, Florida, Box 1016. Chair Kelly, Board, and the school district, thank you all for your service and what you do for our kids. They're important, as you've said a couple times. The reason I'm here is, if not for myself, for the teachers and the students that are in the gender diverse community in the district. And you're asking to put on the, before the public, a hearing for the, let me find it here, Policy 0809, Duties, Ethics, and Professional Conduct. I'm asking you to put a delay on that, and for a couple reasons, hopefully I can explain with just measure. One, it's not due to the state until April of next year, so that gives a little wiggle room on time to discuss it. Another part of that is, there's litigation in works for at least two items on there, the bathroom, private facilities, and the gender pronoun and nickname. So should the litigation stay the bill or the law from being implemented, this would no longer be a required policy change. The second is a question, and I hope that, you know, it's not for a vocal answer, I'm not a teacher looking for answers today, but to think about and answer to yourselves, do you know people like me, or people in the gender diverse community, well enough to have conversed with them, or see how they live, how they feel, you know, what brought a 50-something-year-old to finally accept, you know, what was inside? And if not, I have an offer for you, the district, the board, individually or groups, and that's to meet with myself and a group of people like me, therapists, to learn, to learn about our concerns, our feelings. Because this today isn't about me, it's about those students who are going to see how you treat the teachers, which are in that policy, and it's the nicknames and the pronouns that you use, and whether they feel accepted or not. So that's my offer, and hope that you will stay it. And I guess in closing, in reference to the litigation, a few years ago, the Same-Sex Marriage Act was challenged here in Florida, and a federal judge ruled that it wasn't constitutional. Today, if you read our state constitution, it still defines marriage is between a man and a woman. And yet, you will not find a county, oops, is that it? You will not find any county that will refuse that marriage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to stop. Mr. McGinnis, do you have any input for us on delaying on 7.7, or?
The item is before you tonight, simply asking that you schedule a public hearing, which means that it will not be heard. We have a 28-day waiting period for that, so we're getting started, because these provisions under this policy are from state board rules and the statutes, and so this matter would come back here to you for further public comment before it would be adopted. And so that still would not occur until later in this year because of meeting schedules for the rest of the year.
So is it not due till April, I mean, the final passing?
I think you have to report by then what you've implemented and what you've done, but there's nothing that says you don't do it until then. That's just the deadline to be sure you've reported to Tallahassee what has to happen.
And my assumption would be is that the statute nor the rule envisions any delay based upon any kind of legal challenges?
No, and obviously, if there were a successful legal challenge, we would follow the law and the order of that court in whatever we were doing.
Right, okay.
Thank you. So we'll proceed as normal tonight. Section Six was for the workshop only this morning. Section Seven, then, is our consent agenda. I need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Gardner.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Avancheck. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously as well. Thank you. Section Eight, Superintendent's Human Resources Recommendations. One and Two are information-only. 8.3, Department Staffing Restructure and Curriculum, presented by Dr. Hale. Need a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Dr. White.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. 8.4, Out-of-Field Report for the 2023-2024 School Year, presented by Sharon Duron.
I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Avancheck.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously as well. 8.5, Employment Separations, presented by Dr. Hale.
I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Gardner.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Avancheck. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously as well. 8.6, Personnel Recommendations, presented by Dr. Hale.
I'll move it.
Moved by Dr. White. Seconded by Ms. Avancheck. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carried unanimously. 8.7, Employee Transfers, presented by Dr. Hale.
Move it.
Moved by Ms. Gardner and seconded by Ms. Avancheck. All in favor?
Aye.
And that one also goes unanimously. 8.8, Employee Suspension, presented by Dr. Hale.
Move it.
Moved by Dr. White.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gardner. Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
And that carried unanimously. 8.9, reinstatement/Reimbursement of Sick Leave Due to Line of Duty Illness, Injury, or Medical Exam, presented by Dr. Hale. Need a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Avancheck.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. White. All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. And lastly, 8.10, Leave Without Pay, presented by Dr. Hale.
Move it.
Moved by Ms. Gardner.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Avancheck. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. We do have one item on discussion. 9.1, Request Authorization for the Submital of a Proposal to Purchase a 7.6-Acre Vacant Parcel of Land Located at 401 Beach Drive, Destin, Florida, which is contiguous to the boundary of the Destin Elementary School Campus.
I'll move it.
Madam Chair, my offer, as we said in the workshop this morning, the parties that have this on the market is a receiver in bankruptcy, and there is a form, real estate purchase and sale agreement that they have provided to anyone interested in the property and have asked that proposals be submitted using that form. Under our provisions, under state law, we have to first submit that as an option to purchase, not as a formal contract, and then it is subject to us advertising a public hearing, and after 30 days' notice, coming back, and you conducting a public hearing. And if you vote to accept it then, it converts the option agreement into a formal contract to purchase. So the only adjustment I would ask, as you consider this item tonight, if you make a motion, on the agenda we've got, that we would authorize submittal of a proposal to purchase through a real estate purchase and sale agreement, and I would say, as an option contract. That's what would need to be added to the motion, and authorize the chairman to sign that once the superintendent has completed those details and has determined a fair and reasonable amount to offer under that proposal.
And so we need to entertain a motion, adding the option in there, as well as superintendent.
Right, that the real estate purchase and sale agreement as an option contract subject to public hearing.
Gotcha. Do I hear such a motion?
I'll make the motion with the option. I can't read my writing now. The contract and everything you said.
Yes, ma'am. It's to use their form, but it will be an option contract subject to public hearing after notice.
Right.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gardner and seconded by Dr. White. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carried unanimously. Thank you. That brings us down to Section 10, and notably, Mr. Bryant isn't here this evening, but we appreciate him representing us and the Florida School Boards Association. We know that he's doing good work for us there, and I'm sure he will have a grand report for us when he returns on the construction program. 10.2, TPM Program Number Six, Task Order Number 40, Pre-GMP for Roof Replacement Projects at Megs Middle School and Prior Middle School, presented by Dr. Smith.
Move it.
Moved by Dr. White.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Ms. Avancheck. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. 10.3, TPM Program Number Six, Task Order Number Two, Scope Modification Number Seven, School Security and Fencing, presented by Dr. Smith.
I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Gardner.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Avancheck. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. 10.4, TPM Program Number Six, Task Order Number 12, Scope Modification Number One, Sales Tax COP Projects, presented by Dr. Smith.
I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Avancheck.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. White. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. 10.5, TPM Program Number Six, Task Order Number 16, Scope Modification Number One of Phase Two, Front Entry Canopy Projects, presented by Dr. Smith.
I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Avancheck.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. 10.6, TPM Program Number Six, Task Order Number 19, Scope Modification Number One, Canopy Replacement, Storm Damage, presented by Dr. Smith.
Move it.
Moved by Dr. White.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
And that carried unanimously. Thank you. That moves us to Section 11, Attorney's Business.
No report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. 12, Superintendent's Business.
Thank you, Madam Chair and School Board. As you know, this morning at the Board Workshop, presented information on several items, as well as having Mr. Horton coming up and give an update on student enrollment and FTE, so nothing further this evening.
Thank you. Dr. White?
All right, thank you for Board Member's business. And I just had a couple of things. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending a open house at Prior Middle School with Ms. Avancheck and Mr. Horton, where at that event, Subaru Corporation awarded $10,000 to prior teachers, and I'd just like to say that Principal Lord did a marvelous job, Mr. Superintendent, in leading that event in the Prior Gym, where both you and I have spent some time before. And then lastly, the Choctahatchie Homecoming Game will be Friday, October the 6th, against South Walton High School. And that's all I have.
Thank you for leading us off on the Board Members' announcements. Ms. Gardner?
Yes, I would just like to recognize that we lost a wonderful person, Mr. Ernest Hepson. He was the founding band director at Fort Walton Beach High School. Mr. Hepson and his wife, Ann, she was a fifth-grade teacher at Mr. Hepson and his wife, Ann, she was a fifth-grade teacher at Elliott Point. They spent 50-plus years in working and creating just a program of excellence. And I have a page full of notes right here that I really could have had three or four pages of different accolades that people have said about Mr. Hepson. Again, I said it's over 50 years working with the Viking Band, the pride of the Miracle Strip. And one thing I remember with Mr. Hepson, I was a student during the time when he was there, he had a motto, and it was excellence without exceptions. And whether you were in the band, any extracurricular activity, cheerleading, no matter what it was, that motto rippled throughout our school. And I think even with uniforms, whether it was the majorettes or the cheerleaders, whatever, I think Mr. Hepson had to say so in everything back in those days. He truly had excellence was his, was the motto right there. And I don't think there's another high school in anywhere around that can say that they received 54 years of straight superior ratings, and that is going to be continuing. He, not only did he work with the students at Fort Walton Beach High School, but he was very recognized and respected with other band programs and band directors, not just only in our area, but throughout the state and other states. He, I know in 2004, he was inducted into the Florida Band Master Association Hall of Fame. He never liked to be recognized, but that was just one of many, many honors that he received throughout the years. He truly is, has left a big footprint at Fort Walton Beach High School. And we've talked about others that you mentioned. We've lost several good ones in the last few months.
This past year.
We have. And the legacy that he leaves behind, and we know that that is going to continue. So we send our thoughts and our prayers to his wife, Ann, and the two boys and his family. And he's not here with us right now, but he will never, ever be forgotten. And the Viking Band, the pride of the Viking Band, it will, it will continue to be a program of excellence. Moving on, and to congratulate two more individuals that have made a huge difference, not only at Fort Walton Beach High School, but also within our community, Dr. Alexis Tibbetts, and remember Dr. Tibbetts, and Mr. Steve Riggs. And Mr. Riggs, Steve was in the class of 1972, the first graduating class. And they are going to be inducted at, in the Hall of Fame during our homecoming, October the 13th. So come out and join that. And these two individuals are, like I said, not only have they contributed a huge part into Fort Walton Beach High School, but within our community, and they still continue to give back to our community. And one last thing is, coming up on September 30th, which is this coming Saturday, the Oakley County School District is partnering with WSRE for a program called Amazing Kids Day. And it's a free event for children and their families, children with autism. It will provide fun activities designed for the children, and also activities, educational resources for their families. And again, this is going to take place this coming Saturday, the 30th, at Fort Walton Beach Public Library, from 9:00 till 12:00. They do ask that you register. And if you go to the school district website, there is a nice display advertising this. And if you select it, you can see where you go on and register. And I'm sure that's to make sure that there's enough supplies and materials. But it sounds like an excellent, fun, educational day. And I appreciate the school district in partnering with the WSRE to provide this event. So I think that's it. I've scribbled all over my pages. Yes, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Ms. Avancheck?
No, I have no additional statements tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I made most of my comments this morning too, but just a reminder that we are now under 10 days till the end of the first grading period, so we'll take that into account. And I'll move us back up to 13.1. I believe we resolved-
I'm sorry, one more thing. Now that you've said that, I think the next time we meet, is that not going to be October the 9th? Is that the end of the first nine weeks?
Yes, it is.
That's hard to believe already be-
Already be.
First nine weeks, student holiday, teacher workday.
That's why I keep saying it.
October the 9th.
It's right here on us.
It's hard to believe it's end of September, and the next time we meet will be the end of the first nine weeks.
Exactly.
Sorry to interrupt, but I-
That's okay.
That was part of my scribble here.
I understand that and relate. 13.1, I believe we came to consensus on this morning at our workshop, but I wanted to formally bring that back up and make sure that Ms. Gardner, did you agree that you wanted to continue to be the board member to serve on the-
I will be happy to do it. I enjoy it. But again, if somebody else wants to do it, we can arm wrestle and, but I'm more than happy to do it.
I think the agenda requires a motion.
That's right.
I am moving it down. Ms. Gardner is willing to serve again. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. White. Have a motion.
And I will second it.
And seconded by Ms. Avancheck. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Gardner. You are a hit.
Thank you for serving in that. I enjoy it.
It is a great group to work with.
Absolutely. And some wonderful individuals that where we get to read their applica, or what they submit and our, its support are just amazing.
Exactly.
Amazing individuals.
Thank you. Thank you for serving. That brings us to section 14, Public Comment, the Yellow Card Version. These are items that do not have to relate to an agenda item. Thank you. I see we have several here. So the first one is Mark Cato.
Madam Chair, I would just remind the speakers, in this category, you'll have two minutes to make your comments.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
My concern is about the apps to buy a ticket to get into these games or functions at the schools. And I know I'm not the only one that has difficulties with these things. And of course, it backs the lines up, and it's pretty embarrassing, you know, in a way, you know? But I can read you, if y'all would like for me to read to the state, the Federal Reserve, the governors of the Federal Reserve System on the law about currency. And you have to, section 31 USC 5103 entitled "Legal Tender," States, United States Coins and Currency, including Federal Reserve Notes and circulating notes from Federal Reserve Banks and National Banks, are legal tender for all debts, public charges, taxes, and dues. The statute means that all US money, as identified above, is valid and legal offer a payment for debts when tendered to a creditor. And I was just wondering if we might could do something like an option to go pay by apps or cash when you go to these functions? Because I know cash is, to me, a lot faster than trying to figure out how to get one of these apps done. You know, I've been, thought they might do something the last year. I talked to County Commissioner the other day, and he said he's had several complaints. So maybe we can get some kind of modification done to this before we go total cashless and go currency, direct currency.
Thank you, Mr. Cato.
Can I ask a quick question? Is it, is the problem, because honestly, it happened to me. I went up to go with my tick, my phone, my ticket, and I couldn't bring it up. So I know what you mean about being embarrassing, standing there and trying to-
Fifteen minutes later, and your line's getting further and further.
And you start panicking, and then I couldn't tell you even what my name was at that point.
Right.
But is it the difficulty in purchasing online, or is it the difficulty when you get up there and trying to pull it up, or where, or is it both?
I'm considered a caveman. Yes, I am. My wife can do it. I can't, but she has difficulties. But really and truly, yes, I'm an old-timer, and I don't want change. Because to me, cash is cash. I mean, it's so simple. I go up there and give you $5. Ain't no faster way. Go into McDonald's. They want you to, it's no faster.
The airport everywhere is by, yes.
You know, so I don't see how it's saving anything, you know? Guys up there still having to look at your phone or help you find it or this or that. And some of them have been really nice to me. I really appreciate them helping me. I've given them the cash, and they bought the ticket for me. But I mean, you shouldn't have to do that, you know? But I appreciate if y'all might can discuss this. I heard it was all over the county. Baker don't do it. The rest of them do. So, and I know Santa Rose does and everything else. Baker doesn't do it.
The reason is the, oftentimes, the connectivity in Baker area is too challenging to-
Well, yeah, you don't get a signal for very good.
You get the signal, yeah.
But I appreciate if y'all would-
Thank you.
Do that for me.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
All right. The next one is Brittany Mathis. Is this Brittany here?
Yeah.
Who should come in? Good evening.
So I'd like to start off with, first off, my name is Brittany Mathis. I have children at Davidson Middle as well as Bob Sykes. I'd like to address a concern with how the school administration is not following school board policies at Davidson Middle. I'd also like to know why the nurses do not have to send home any medical note, report, anything like that, saying that there was an emergency that happened at Davidson Middle. And then I would also like to address, why do administrators not have to send home a redacted incident report when a child is assaulted at Bob Sykes? So those are my questions. I was told not to address as far as who I spoke with at each school. So I really can't go into detail about what issues happened, but I feel very strongly about them. One of my children, the two of my children are my stepchildren, but they're not stepchildren. I do not step on my children. They're my bonus parents, my bonus children. So to be denied a medical report after I've been told that my child passed out on the football field at Davidson, because I am a stepparent, I could have melted in the floor. And at 2023, there's an issue with that. The other issues I have ties into security, as in Bob Sykes not checking IDs for the daycare for children to be checked out. They said that they have a four-digit number, but when the administrators don't check the children in, the number doesn't check the children out. So that's kind of my concern. And I have many more on the security issues if somebody would reach out to me.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you being here tonight. And we'll have a member of our staff, not tomorrow, but tonight, who will speak with you, and we'll get those particulars, and we'll get you answers to those questions. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Gregory.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Amanda Gregory, and I have several children. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I don't like to talk and speak.
It's all right.
I have several children in the school system. And I want to know what is classified as an emergency situation, and at what point do the parents get notified? My daughter was climbing on a rock wall and slipped off and fell, and it was like a five-foot-five drop. It's as tall as me. And she was told to shake it off and walk halfway down the school to the nurse. The first document that I received said that she fell, and then I got another note the next day that said that she fell and was sent to the nurse. I tried contacting the school for four days in a row. At one point, we had to literally go to the school and tell them that we were not leaving until someone told us what happened. And what we could possibly do about it, like maybe better training for the teachers? Should there be a better ratio for the students to teachers? Or what could we actually do about it? Because when she fell, she cracked a rib. And there were imprints of the rock wall on her. It was a pretty serious fall.
This rock wall's at the school?
Yes. Yes. It was on the playground at the school. She was not medically assessed until she walked to the nurse, which is, it was a pretty good distance. And she did end up injuring herself. And nobody assessed her to make sure there was no head injury, no, nothing. She was just told to shake it off and go to the nurse. And then the nurse called me to tell me that she fell. They couldn't tell me how she fell, couldn't tell me any bit of information. So I had to spend three to four days prying the teachers, asking for video surveillance, which I was denied, even though I told them that they could redact the children and still let me see exactly what happened. She said nobody pushed her, she just slipped. But the lack of want to make sure that she wasn't seriously injured bothers me, because she could have hit her head very hard.
I'm sure that you'll be able to share with staff, the school, and the particulars of the situation.
Okay.
Definitely. And definitely hope your daughter is okay.
Absolutely.
Oh, she's better now. It's been about three weeks. She's better. But she's still a little sore.
Okay. Now, I appreciate that. And again, we'll have a member of our staff get with you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. And the last yellow card I have is for Matthew Hicks.
All right, I'll do it tonight.
Hi.
Good, how are you?
All right, so I'm Matthew. Amanda's my fiancee. To follow up on what she was talking about, we get phone calls from the school when our kids have tummy aches, but we don't get phone calls when they fall off and leave a horseshoe imprint on their sides. Or when my daughter, I hate to say this, but she brought a multi-tool to school, and it was a pocket knife, and the school took her into a room and for an hour interrogated her in the fifth grade. And I didn't know about it until I went to go pick her up from the school and was told about it then. I feel like if she has, if she has rights as a human and an American in this country, that stands at any point, she shouldn't be drug into a room by herself, by another adult, without me at least being phoned calling to say, hey, this is a situation we got to deal with, and we're going to talk to your daughter about what happened. I didn't even get that kind of a courtesy. But I can get a phone call when her tummy hurts. So I think that that needs to be tightened up. Another thing I want to address is, I don't understand, this is my first meeting, the slander, if it's a fact. If I bring up something about a person and it is a fact, then under the statute of the United States Federal Code, that is not slander at all. So I just, if I've got grievance against a certain person, I feel like I should at least bring that to y'all. Do I write that to y'all? How do I bring that about a specific grievance to a specific person? That's pretty much my question.
So I would say on the front end, you always have the ability to reach out to me. And we have the ability, you know, of course, you always have the right to come here, but you also have the ability to reach out to me, talk specifically with me about any employee in this school district, specifically what happened. And I'm the one who is responsible for carrying out those conversations, whether it be giving you information or taking other forms of action. So again, so you definitely have the ability to speak with me. But again, you always have the right to come before us tonight.
Okay. And then, I know y'all can't address the other concerns right now, some y'all have to discuss amongst yourselves. But just note that the parents are talking amongst ourselves. We also have people on Facebook blocking our abilities to mention y'all's meetings. Brian Frost being the main one, I don't know, he's related to the school in some aspect, but not y'all's board. But we're trying to get people here so we can get things fixed the way we think they should be. And we appreciate y'all's time.
And Mr. Chambers, you'll have someone tomorrow, maybe reach out to Mr. Hicks and-
Tonight.
Tonight. Perfect.
I'm sorry, I'm hearing voices. I got, I got tonight as I'm a veteran.
We were just saying, a member of the staff tonight will speak with you and help We were just saying, a member of the staff tonight will speak with you and help you get things resolved.
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And those were all the cards that I received this evening. So that brings us down to section 16. Unless there's anything else, executive staff, anybody have a comment, anything to share? Anybody from the union? Superintendent? Mr. Horton does. Okay.
Just very briefly, it was notified by Mr. Mitchell during the meeting that there was an issue with the live stream computer. The meeting itself has been recorded and is full, and it's going to be posted on the normal spot tomorrow, but we put a notice up that there was a technical problem.
Thank you so much. Anything from the union? No. Mr. Superintendent, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Your sweet husband.
I'll see him. He came to save me.